I would like to call this meeting to order of the Town of Air Select Board on Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. This meeting, hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting/hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, review and approve the agenda?
I have no amendments.
I do not either.
Nope.
Nope.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to announcements. We have the state primary election on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street. Polling is held on the second floor in the Great Hall. Early voting will be offered in person at the Air Town Hall, Saturday, August 24th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday, August 26th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 27th, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, August 28th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thursday, August 29th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And Friday, August 30th, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. August 24th, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. is the last day to register to vote or change party enrollment for this election. August 26th, by 5:00 p.m., vote-by-mail applications must be received by this date. All absentee or early voting ballots must be returned by September 3rd, 8:00 p.m. to the Air Town Hall lock boxes. You can call 978-772-8220, extension 153, or email clerk@air.ma.us. Any other announcements? Move on to public input.
I'm with Maxine Schultz, 17 Tast Street. This is something that has occurred in 2019. I've been wanting to bring it to the board and to Robert since that time. I still haven't recovered from my stroke fully, so I probably best just to read things rather than try to speak them. It doesn't connect sometimes. So, in August of 2019, one of the selectmen resigned, leaving unfulfilled two and a half years of a three-year term. Their resignation was announced on August 13th, selectmen's meeting with the town clerk. Someone added that the person who would be elected would only serve until April, and then the two selectmen, we had left Dutton Fields to climb to spend the $5,000 for the election. So, I knew that this was not true, that they would fulfill the term of the person who resigned, and I wrote a letter to the town group. And then Robert responded to that letter by writing, saying, "I'm writing to clarify some erroneous information that the town clerk and I were initially provided by the Secretary of State's Election Division regarding the potential special election for the board's selectman." The Secretary of State's Election Division originally advised the town on August 13th, 2016, when the selectman resigned, that the winner in a special reelection would serve until the end of the next annual election, I'm sorry, and would still have to run in the annual election for the remaining two years of vacated term. We have since learned this information is not true. We have expressed our frustration to the Secretary of State Elections Division regarding the importance of providing accurate information to the public. In the event that a special election was held to fill the selectman's seat vacated by the selectman, the winner of that special election would serve out the full balance on the vacated term and serve until the annual election in 2022. The winner would not have to run again in 2020. There, I could go on about that. But then, I was very puzzled when I read that because he's saying the Secretary of State gave them bad information. Someone gave the board's selectmen bad information, and he's saying it was Secretary of State. So, I wrote to the Secretary of State and asked, and then they returned by saying, "Thank you for forwarding the content of the notice from the town manager of whom I have called to clarify this matter. We worked with the town clerk yesterday as she was preparing the calendar for the election, and yet we remained unaware of this correspondence from the town manager until your email. As such, I can confirm that we have had no further communications with the town between the August conversation with the clerk and with her emails yesterday about scheduling. We certainly did not receive any communication regarding frustration with this office. I have spoken to the town clerk today, who acknowledges that there was a misunderstanding rather than bad information being provided. This confusion appears to have been with either holding a special election or leaving the position vacant until the next election. If the special election is held, the person elected serves the remainder of the term. I have also spoken to the town manager regarding the distribution of inaccurate information to avoid issues in the future. We have requested that all inquiries and the town clerk be in writing." I'm bringing it up because Robert apparently gave you bad information you acted on, and you accused it to be the Secretary of State, and then they were very unhappy with it. It's one thing to lie about something you've done, but then lie about the Secretary of State and tell them something and explain to the whole town that they were lying about it, or that they were misunderstanding. Misunderstanding seems to be euphemism with Robert for lying.
Point of order.
Mr. Chair, Noaka first.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, first of all, this was five years ago. At the time that the resignation of former selectman Hillman came in that night was when we found out, okay? And immediately, we were asked some questions. Well, of course, we were also trying to figure out which way was up, okay? A mistake was made, okay? A mistake, five years ago. It's a little interesting why you've waited five years to come to this, to bring this forward, to say that he was lying. No, a human being gave inaccurate information, that is true, but it was immediately corrected, okay? And the special election was immediately held, of which you even ran, okay? So, I don't understand why you've decided to come here five years later to call our town manager a liar for something that a mistake was made, which we all acknowledged, and we all got after him, like, okay, so you gave us inaccurate information, and he said yes. So, it all was taken care of five years ago. Why you would come here today to complain about something that happened five years ago? And it was all corrected, special election happened, all was well with the world. But I think it's pretty rude to come here five years later to call Robert a liar about a mistake that was made five years ago that lasted all of 10 minutes and was immediately corrected. The 10 minutes is just an exaggeration, okay? But the special election had, you ran. So, I don't understand what the confusion was.
Because this type of activity from Robert goes on all the way.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No, no. No, no. You can't come here and talk about something that happened five years ago and then try to say that it's a habit, because it is not a habit. And I think it's pretty rude of you to come here with one incident five years ago, all of which get corrected, an election happened, you ran, obviously didn't make it, but now you've decided, what, you had nothing better to do tonight, so you'd bring it up? I don't understand.
I think that there's a decorum thing going on. I think calling it rude is inappropriate, so I think you should let us know.
Calling a liar is inappropriate as well.
Both of you, though, I think it's a common language.
So, I don't even understand the purpose of this conversation.
Well, I would like to present to you, I have other instances of proof. See, the problem isn't that he just lied to you. He lied about the Secretary of State's office, and that...
No, he misspoke about something.
No, no.
It's not a lie. He misspoke, and it was correctly corrected.
He said they gave them bad information. He didn't even talk to them. And I would like to give you more proof of other cases where I have...
Respectfully, a point of order.
Please.
If I'm going to be put on surprise trial by Ms. Maxson in a public forum, I will reserve the right to retain my counsel to deal with this. This is completely inappropriate, unprofessional, and unethical, and uncalled for.
I agree.
Okay. Well, I wanted to give it an open meeting, so I'd have a chance, at least, to talk about it.
And you were afforded that chance.
Okay.
Okay. Any other public input?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Are you going to have a discussion about, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Denise Fraw. Are you going to have a discussion about Michelle, because I don't want to bring it up before the timeframe? Okay, I'll wait till then.
Yep, yep. Okay. All right, so we will move on to the common victular license, the change of ownership at the Junction, at 60 West Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you have in your packet, the Junction RPD is going to have, is under new ownership, and as such, they need a new common victular license, which is in your packet. Everything has checked out, as you can see in the packet, the SERVE Safe Certification, the ALAGEN Certification, and it did go through the interdepartmental review, and there were no issues. So, the owner is in front of you tonight for your consideration for approval for signature by the board.
Any questions or concerns? Anything to add? Not that you have to, but, okay. I mean, everything looks like it's in order here.
So, quick question, I guess. So, this change of ownership, what exactly, what just, I don't, what exactly happened as to why we're having a change of ownership, I guess?
The old owner, his name...
Just he just wanted to know?
Yeah, he just wanted to sell the business. We bought the business, and...
Okay.
Yep. And you're planning on running it pretty much the same as the past ownership?
Yeah, we're going to do the same beads and bakery and Italian beads as well, so, stuff, the whole thing.
Okay.
Good.
I have no concerns.
All right.
So, I will make, do you have it in front of you? I will make a motion that the board approve the victulars license, I don't think that's right, to certify that Saint Domadius...
Saint Domadius.
Thank you very much, Incorporated, DBA Junction, RPD, 60 West Main Street, Air, Mass. 01432, be approved, by signature by the board.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so...
We'll get this signed.
Yeah, we'll get it signed at the end.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you for coming. Thank you. See, some things are very easy. Okay, next on the agenda is the Devon's Crest Tenants Association presentation.
Jeff? I'd like to invite Mr. Rick Henkin to the table with me, if I may.
Please.
Connie Sullivan from 79 East Main Street, here in Air. Just wanted to update the board on the efforts of the Devon's Crest Tenants Association on what's happened to date, and where we hope to go in the near future. So, I know you're a new selectman, and I'd like to give you a little bit of background to the extent that you're not up to speed on what the Devon's Crest Tenants Association has been doing. As you know, Devon's Crest, it's a neighborhood on the east side of town, consists of approximately 110 units, is what we have been referring to as naturally occurring affordable housing, meaning the rents were just kept low by the landlord, the prior landlord, for many, many years, and as a result, people of modest means, the workers in our town were able to afford those apartments. That changed three years ago, and a firm by the name of Brady Sullivan purchased the entire complex, and they did so for $11.6 million. And one of the first orders of business by Brady Sullivan was to then issue notices to quit, which begin eviction processes, eviction actions, and there was about 40 of those or so that were issued. And those were what we referred to as no-fault evictions. It wasn't because we had tenants at Devon's Crest that were behind in rent, it was because Brady Sullivan wanted to get possession of the units so they could renovate, put them back on the market, and they did so in a number of instances where tenants left voluntarily, but did so in a number of instances for rents that were more than double what the prior tenants were paying, certainly far above what the remaining tenants are able to afford. So, you know, one of the challenges, not only for our town, but throughout Massachusetts and the rest of our country, has been, what are we doing? How can we preserve housing to be affordable for the people? And although the Town of Air has made some great strides in that regard, you can never have too much affordable housing. You know, one of the reasons my wife and I moved to town 37 years ago was because Air was, in fact, affordable. It was the cheapest place to live at that point in time, and we could buy a house, which we did, and worked on renovating it for over 10 years before we got it to the place that we wanted it to be. And because Air had a history of having affordable housing, we also had something very unique occur in our town, and that's where we had multiple generations of the same families living here in town. Go anywhere else, families get split up because the younger generation just can't afford to live in town. And when you have multiple generations of the same family living in town, it just helps make raising a child a little bit easier. And as we all know, that certainly has its challenges today. So, in the late summer, early fall of 2021, the tenants of Devon's Crest brought their dilemma to the board. The board certainly was able to give us, the board and your town manager, our town manager was able to give us some guidance on, you know, issues that we needed to address as a tenants' group. And that was, you know, where would we get the financial resources to acquire and preserve the Devon's Crest neighborhood as an affordable community, and where would we get the personnel to manage something like that? So, over the last three years, the Devon's Crest tenants have worked and built a team, an incredible team, to join with them in their efforts to preserve the affordability of Devon's Crest, one of which is the Mass Law Reform Institute. It's a law firm in Boston, specializes in housing and anti-poverty issues. They were actually the custodians of a $250,000 grant, which our state senator, Jamie Eldridge, was successful in securing to help preserve Devon's Crest as affordable, and the Mass Law Reform Institute helps manage that grant. We have Matt Thau, who is from Brookline, Massachusetts. He is an expert in affordable housing financing, and Matt, together with some funding from CEDAC, Community Economic and Development Corporation, was able to develop an economic model to show that preserving Devon's Crest long-term as an affordable community certainly was viable to do so. We attracted Jeff Mullen, who is an attorney. He's also the former Secretary of Transportation for the state of Massachusetts, a partner with the law firm Foley-Hogue in downtown Boston, one of our premier law firms in downtown Boston. And Jeff and his firm have a great deal of experience with affordable housing and eminent domain issues on behalf of the state of Massachusetts. Certainly has been a great mentor to the Devon's Crest tenants on their issue. David Abramowitz, another attorney from Goldston and Storrs, another premier law firm in downtown Boston, also with a great deal of expertise in affordable housing. And Cliff Bonner, an architect with Davis Square Architects, who works very closely with a number of state agencies in building affordable housing projects. So, that's the team that we developed and have been working with. Once we were able to put together that economic feasibility study, a presentation was made to Kate Racer, who's the Assistant Director of the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as DHCD. Kate was, Ms. Racer was very impressed with what our team had been able to do and the economic model that we were able to put forth. And of course, the big issue that kept coming up was, well, so what do you do about ownership? So, with the prompting of Mr. Pampreion and members of your board, we also issued a RFQ, a request for qualifications of a number of developers that had experience with affordable housing, and that was sent out to approximately 12 different firms. The Devon's Crest Tenants Association then reviewed those applications, narrowed the choices down to two, and chose one, which was the Shocket Companies, and I have Rick Henkin from the Shocket Companies with us today. Rick has agreed to act as the partner and the development partner with the Devon's Crest Tenants Association for the preservation, the acquisition and preservation of Devon's Crest as an affordable community. So, I'd like to just have Mr. Shocket, if I will, give a little bit of presentation about himself and his firm, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for giving us all the time here. It has been an amazing privilege to have won the beauty contest, to be selected, to work with the folks at Devon's Crest. I've made some good, real friends over the process. The team that Connie and the others have assembled really is the A-team of the affordable housing industry in this state. Davis Square is a spectacular architect. David Abramowitz, pound for pound, is the best affordable housing lawyer probably in the country, certainly in the state. And it's easy to see why these folks signed up willingly and joyously to help solve this problem for this group of people. So, and the town has been great. Everybody has been just so welcoming. Mr. Pampreion has been open and honest and paid attention, and it's just, it's really meant a lot. So, the Shocket Companies, we are, we've been in business for over 50 years. We just celebrated our 50th anniversary a couple of years ago now. We are almost exclusively developers, owners, operators of affordable housing, and just in New England. We've not ventured outside New England. We built a long and solid reputation in New England, and people know us, and we know people, and so we're able to get things done here. I'd say about two-thirds, we own and operate about 5,500 apartments, of which 90%, 95% are affordable under one program or another, and probably 3,000 of those are in Massachusetts. We've got some stuff in Boston proper, you know, out towards this way, we've got a 312-unit development in Lemonster. Further out, we're in Gardner, we're in Worcester with a 302-unit deal. I know, not exactly Air, not exactly in the Showover Valley, but close, you know, so we know this part of the state as well. We've done a lot of work with the lawyers and with the tenant association on modeling a transaction that will allow for the long-term preservation of as many units as possible, as affordable, at as low a level as possible. Part of our program, and why the architect has been so integral, is as part of any acquisition and preservation transaction, we would be spending significant amounts on thoroughly rehabilitating the property, bringing everything up to current codes, making everything fresh and beautiful. And, you know, as we sit here today, we had estimated in our models that we would spend at least $100,000 per dwelling unit as, you know, part of our uses of funds to make the units fantastic, so that people can have, you know, really, really good housing. The dynamics change every day as to what the tenant profile is going to look like, what the income mixes are going to be potentially. We've gotten, as Connie said, we've gotten really good support from the state, and at the end of the day, there's going to be, based on the rents, there's going to be an amount of debt that the property can support, and the plan would be to get low-income housing tax credits, which would be another source of funds, probably some real cash equity, and there's going to be a gap, because the only way to pay the seller what he thinks is fair market value to get him to convey to us so that we can preserve, is to somehow find sources to make up that difference between what the property is worth at his $2,200 a month rents and what we can support at $1,200 a month, or $1,400 a month, or whatever the number is that we settle in on. And the really good news is that Kate Racer has expressed an interest and is impressed and thinks it is viable. Her boss, Secretary Augustus, was out here visiting, has been very involved and taken a real personal interest in this. And so, we're working through now, as we speak, trying to figure out how much public money is going to be needed and make sure that the state's appetite is such that they'll provide enough for us to be able to do what we need to do and... provide enough for us to be able to do what we need to do and preserve rents at the levels where we want to preserve the rents. So, we're working every day, trying to hone our numbers and, you know, are working through the process, and hopefully, we'll be at a point in the relatively near term where we've got a number that will allow us to buy the property. And we won't make an offer, and we won't nail that down until we've got all of our ducks in a row lined up to make sure that all of our financing sources are going to be there, because it's really bad when, you know, you're leading the troops in a war, into battle, and you look behind you and somehow nobody's there. So, we've done this. My company has done things like this on many occasions, for better or for worse. This would be the fourth situation for us, where we've done what I call putting the toothpaste back in the tube. Whatever affordability existed is potentially gone. And now, to go back and put the pieces together and go back to affordability is a much bigger challenge than preserving something as affordable while it's still under programs and in a position where it is affordable. So, we've got some experience. It's a challenge. It's really a labor of love for us. It's what we do, and we're hoping to get to a good result.
So, we are thrilled to have Mr. Henkin and his company as our development partner with this project. And I did want to just mention, you said the state was very involved, Ed Augustus. Ed Augustus, who's the Massachusetts Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities, actually made a trip out here to AR back in January toward Devon's Crest. And as Rick said, he's been very supportive in our efforts and in trying to make this project a reality. So, we also are working with our local housing authority, by the way, not to leave out Ken Martin, the director, the executive director of the housing authority. We've met with him several times. And we hope, in the near future, to actually be going to a meeting with the housing authority with some kind of a proposal. We are actively engaged in trying to get a dialogue with the owner of Devon's Crest, the Brady Sullivan Company. And Mr. Henkin has been instrumental in those efforts, and we hope to have some good news in the not-so-distant future. So, with that, my purpose in coming tonight was to formally ask this board for its support of the efforts of the Devon's Crest Tenants Association, the formerly organized nonprofit organization that represents all of the tenants at Devon's Crest, to support their efforts and to also support the housing authority's efforts, working with the Devon's Crest Tenants Association, and again, acquiring and preserving the Devon's Crest community as long-term affordable housing. So, I did have a proposed motion that got to your packet, it's probably late. I didn't get it to your office until yesterday, but certainly would appreciate the support of the board.
Okay. You know, I obviously always want to support affordable housing. You know, I do see your motions here, but, you know, I'd want to discuss, you know, if we actually want to use this wording, or, you know, discuss amongst ourselves.
Can I peek at it again?
Yeah.
Thank you, because I don't have it.
Understand, we're not asking for any kind of a financial contribution from the town. We're just asking for a public, public motion of support for all of the efforts that the group, that the Devon's Crest Tenants Association has pulled together, and their support for their efforts over the last three years, and where we currently are in trying to, again, set up that dialogue with the current property owners.
I mean, I have no problem throwing some support. I don't think that that particular motion would be right. The way it's worded, I think it can, I think it's a little problematic. But I can kind of see where, how am I, give me a second while I try to figure out how I'm wording this. I see our affordable housing people are here. I mean...
We have a number of people from Devon's Crest here.
Our committee. Did we want to ask them anything, or, I don't...
Yeah. I mean, if anyone chooses to speak, or...
Well, I mean, I'm like, because, I mean, this kind of motion, like, they gone before you, and like...
Yeah. I mean, we haven't seen any, you know, any of the, what the motion is and everything, right? Janet Provost, okay, on the Affordable Housing Committee, as well as a commissioner on the housing authorities. With the wording, the, there was like two things, but we do support, you know, trying to get affordable housing, for sure. And then, the other thing too is Attorney Sullivan did state something with regards to the housing authority. Well, the, even though it's the AR Housing Authority, it's a state-run organization. So, I know that they would have to go ahead and go back to whatever DHCD's operating is. But, again, I think we've had conversations where the Affordable Housing Committee, we definitely support it. And same thing with, I think I've spoken with Attorney Sullivan as well, Community Preservation Committee, I'm the chair of that as well, you know, would support it, because again, our drive is to get more affordable housing.
Right.
All right? If that helps out at all.
Well, I guess I'm a little concerned as far as the part where it's talking about the acquisition. So, I'm cautious as to using this particular written motion that has been brought to our attention, because it's talking about, like, basically the town acquiring the property, the acquisition.
It wouldn't be that.
So, and I want to be cautious about that, because we've kind of talked about that before, because that kind of goes into what I'm thinking you might be thinking about, I think, is eminent domain. And that's where we have a problem. So, that's why, so I'm concerned about the wording, but I can certainly throw my support and figure out a way to word something so that it gives you what you're looking for.
We are actively engaged through our development partner, Mr. Henkin's company, in trying to purchase the Devon's Crest neighborhood, not through eminent domain.
Okay. Okay. No, that clears that up.
We had an initial offer of several million dollars over Brady Sullivan's initial purchase price, which was rejected. And we have been sharpening our pencils to try to reengage with Brady Sullivan, to talk about a further purchase price for the property. So, that purchase price would be funded in part by borrowing power of the Shocket Company and all of the state subsidies and tax credits that are available through DHCD and the, Mr. Augustus's agency, Community and Livable...
I can never remember what you mentioned.
Okay. Okay. So, I cleared that up.
Right. Because this came late to our packet, you know, I just glanced at it very quickly, and that was my first thought. And I know, talking through your presentation, that was never brought up, but still, if we're going to make any kind of motion, I have to make sure that that's not, you know, part of it, is the eminent domain, that it's...
Yeah. Okay.
And the housing authority would be involved, because it would be actually a purchase by the housing authority, which would in turn, the day after, transfer ownership to the Shocket Company, which would then have a ground lease for 99 years. But that's how the housing authority, it would just be a conduit for the purchase of the property. And then, the management, the burden wouldn't be on our housing authority, it would be on Mr. Henkin's company. So, it's like an ideal situation, if we can hit the right number with Brady Sullivan for a purchase price, it's the ideal situation to preserve that number of units as affordable, and certainly put the town way above its 5% to 10% threshold for affordable housing.
We did this in Franklin, Mass, where we acquired 288 units, where the toothpaste had gone out of the tube. And we put them back into a long-term use restriction with the state. And so, the town of Franklin got 288 units added to their 40B inventory without adding one unit. Now, I know part of the goal is to add units, but when, obviously, when you're over the 10%, you put the units where you want to put the units, and where it's best for the town, as opposed to having a developer come in and stick it wherever he wants. So, and that was a big win, and the town of Franklin, you know, loved us for that. And it wasn't, it was something that sort of occurred to me well into the process, right? And it's like, oh, wow, look at that. You know, you're there concerned about adding kids to the schools, like, the kids are already in the schools, and now you're getting the unit, so, viacondios.
Well, like we said, we needed to, you know, with this, we got this motion, like, right before the meeting, so we needed to kind of discuss this before we... I think, I think that kind of, that was my big question. That was my big question. And in reading it, and now that we've had that explained and everything, we might be okay.
Yeah. It'll be public and private sources that pay for it.
Yeah. And I hear we have, like, $9 billion in a rainy day fund by the state, so just saying, you might want to call them, just saying.
And they're bragging about the $6.5 billion Revolutionary Housing Bond Bill.
While they're eating their ice cream, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hi. Jeff Solison, Booker Drive, and current chairman of the AR or Housing Trust. I came because I wanted to know what this was all about. I'm sorry that we haven't had a chance to talk, Connie, before you came to speak to the select board. I'll speak for myself, not for the trust. Absolutely 100% supportive of affordable housing. Got a couple of quick questions. This will be in perpetuity of affordable housing, or this will be affordable housing for a period of time?
It will be, effectively, it will be in perpetuity. The plan is...
It'll be de-restricted affordable forever?
It'll, for sure, it will have a 30-year use restriction.
Okay. So, it'll be clear?
And...
For a period of time, it'll be de-restricted? Thank you.
But that certainly could be perpetual, right? I mean, the standard deal is 30 years. And I'm not going to own anything, right? My company's not going to own anything. The association will own it.
Which is so unique about...
That was my question. Will this be, excuse me, will this be de-restricted in perpetuity? That's my only...
It absolutely can be.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question. The Devon's Crest Tenants Association, non-voting, it's a tension of DCTA, and it's a period to own properties and have it affordable forever. Is that correct? I've got four DCTA members here. Correct?
And I didn't need to be slippery at all.
Add the transaction.
Yeah.
It will remain small A affordable, and small A affordable in perpetuity at this point. That's all. That's just the question I'm asking.
30 years, then DCTA has proven for small A affordable forever. We have to buy it, so we have to rent it in 30 years. Or...
Under the current, under the current plan.
That's right. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Pauline, I see your hair.
Thank you, Chris. Question, or a point, a question and a suggestion. The point I want to make is, as I recall, last year, the board went on record not to involve any public funds, town funds, in any acquisition of Devon's Crest. We just don't have those kind of funds, and we're all in a quiet corner now of Nushova Valley Medical Center. So, that's my point. My question is, will the motion that Mr. Sullivan submitted late for your meeting be available online tomorrow?
Yeah. Yep. We'll get that on there.
And then, my suggestion, given the importance and delicacy of this particular request, that you wait for a full board. You are two members of a three-member board, and this kind of issue needs the representation of the entire board of selectmen, my suggestion. So, I thank you for that.
Thank you, Pauline. Yes, please.
Cindy Lavine, also AR or Housing Trust with Jeff. As we're looking at this, it just, one thing that sticks out is the idea of the board offering its support to the AR Housing Authority in Kennesaw here. This can't be done without Kennedy. And that might be one, because we were balking that and not wanting to sign it. But my question is, does the board have the authority, not authority, but is it appropriate for the select board to interfere at all? Not interfere.
I think what you're trying to say is, we don't normally kind of get involved in some of those decisions until town meeting.
Because AR Housing Authority is a state...
Right.
...organization, it is not a town board. So, to ask for the, I don't know, Connie, maybe you can explain that.
Although the AR Housing Authority is a state board or agency, if you will, they're part of our town. I mean, their membership consists of people that live in our town. So, you know, they want to make sure that the town supports this as well.
I think some of the points have been brought up, as far as, you know, even having Mr. Martin here, and so we could have this on our next meeting.
Yeah. I mean, it's not time-sensitive, as in two weeks, if we discuss this at our next meeting, that's not going to derail.
It's not from our perspective, but the housing authority is the one that actually threw Mr. Martin, requested, see if we can get the town to say they support this as well.
Well, just to say, I don't think he sent us an email to say, hey, you know...
Dealing with your administrative board? We've been dealing with the town manager and the assistant town manager.
Right. But you said AR Housing Authority, that they said to, you know, that's what you just said, that they said to come to us. So, if AR Housing Authority wants us to support them, they should kind of send a note.
They may not have directly to the board members, but they certainly have to Mr. Pomprion and Carly Antonellis.
But they formally, normally, those things are like, kind of formal, and he would forward us, say, here's a, you know, something from AR Housing. But I agree, I think we should just postpone this until our next meeting.
Yeah. I mean, again, this coming in a little bit late, you know, and I would like to, the points that brought up, table it to the next meeting. You know, I think we all are in support, but to then formally support it, I would like to have just those couple more weeks.
Mr. Chair? I just wanted to say that Mr., the person from the housing authority, Ken, there's been discussions since, like, I think, January, maybe even before that. So, it's not like we, that he doesn't know anything about this. So, there have been several discussions, and the meeting that we had on January 30 with the housing authority, he was there as well. So, it's something that we, he's known about for a while.
The Secretary of Mass Housing.
Thank you.
Yes, that was just our question, because it was my understanding this motion was not for any material support, and that it wasn't any kind of legal thing, it was more like emotional support, that we're on the right track. Is that what I understand?
But our housing authority has even expressed a little bit of a question as to the wording of the motion, and they too feel that Mr. Martin maybe should be here.
No, we're going to have a meeting.
Affordable, yeah. So, it's just, so... Affordable, yeah. So it's just, so.
We are absolutely 100% in favor.
Oh, absolutely.
My only question is just that, that's, that way of wording it, that's.
Right.
And I think if Ken were here and was saying, yeah, that's fine, a time, I wish it were.
Yeah. See, we, I mean, yeah, we support it. Absolutely. But that motion and whatnot, and coming in kind of late, and now there's all the questions and everything.
Can I make a suggestion? So I used to be a select board member in different towns, and often if you don't like the exact words, you could make, you know, a motion to say, we support, that's enough, and let the town manager work out.
True, but the second part of this motion does directly cite the Air Housing Authority?
You can pop it up.
So, I mean, if...
If you could just read what the motion, someone took my copy of it. If you could read what the motion says, so everybody, everybody knows what we're asking the board to do.
You can write it any way you want. Right, but we also, it's also been brought up by a resident that maybe we should wait for the full board.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, just read what the second part of the motion is that seems to be a concern.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
One second.
Yeah, read the whole.
The whole motion?
Sure. It was, "The board hereby moves that the Air Select Board offer its support on behalf of the Town of Air for the Devon's Crest Tenants Association's efforts to acquire and preserve the Devon's Crest community as a long-term affordable housing, and offer its support to the Housing, Air Housing Authority, working with the Devon's Crest Tenants Association, for the acquisition and preservation of the Devon's Crest community as long-term affordable housing."
Mr. Chair, that's what Mr. Chalk was saying when he mentioned that, to get the, you know, the support from also the Housing Authority, in that it was only going to be a temporary thing that happened between the Air Housing Authority, then it went, it's going over to the, to the developers. So they don't, it's not something that they're going to be sitting on top of as being in charge. It's going to go from the Air Housing Authority and then to the developers. So it's something that, it's something that's done many times, but I guess, you know, like when you're not, it's something that's done across the state various times, but maybe it hasn't been done in air anymore. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got no problem coming back before the board. I don't know if we can make it back at the very next meeting of the board, but certainly we can schedule this when you have a full board, and we can invite Ken Martin if you'd like.
I think that would be for the best, if we could do that. As you say, I mean, you have our support, you know? I mean, we, it's just those, you know, couple things. And I agree, we should have the full board here, and if Ken can be here, that, that would kind of cinch it, so.
And we can make sure that the motion is written beautifully. Not that it isn't, but you did a nice job. I don't want it to sound like you didn't do a nice job.
We also, and we hear you loud and clear that you're supportive of this effort, and...
We do.
That means everything.
We do, but when it comes to a motion, it's got to be.
I got it. But it, clearly, this is a town that embraces the idea of affordable housing, and is, you know, Connie said, it's a multi-generational town, and there aren't that many of those towns left in this great Commonwealth. So, so thank you. It's really appreciated. One last comment.
What if we modify it so it's just the first part, and forget the upcoming, we'll come back to that part?
I'm not going to make the motion, so.
No, we're going to just wait. So, and just so everyone knows, we're rescheduling the September 3 meeting. It's on the agenda. Later on, we'll be rescheduling, because that's the state primary. We can't have a meeting that day. Okay, so.
So your point being, it'll be after September 3?
Mr. Chair, would you, I make a motion that we take that particular agenda item up right now, so that that, that question can be answered?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, as you know, September 3 is the state primary. Hold on a second while I get to the page, people. And so we cannot have a meeting on that day due to the primary. And so it has been put in the packet that it is proposed that the select board meet on Wednesday, September 4, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Now, for everyone asking why it's at that time, it's because of the meeting schedules that are going on, and it was more important that we have a meeting, okay? So with that, Mr. Chair, unless you disagree, I'd like to make a motion that the select board meeting of September 3 be changed to Wednesday, September 4, 2024, at 5:00 p.m.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
September 4.
At 5:00 p.m.
Because that falls right after Labor Day, we may have a difficult time with some vacation schedules, and if we could just have the flexibility of either that date or your next meeting, and we can certainly be in touch with the town manager on that issue. Great.
And like we said, I mean, you did a great presentation. We support it, it's just that official part, you know, I would just like to wait to the next meeting, so.
Good. All right. Thank you very much for your time. Nice meeting you.
Yes, very nice meeting you, and thank you for your time.
By the way, thank you to the board and all your efforts with respect to Nushova Valley Medical Center.
And thank you for all your effort, because yeah, affordable housing is absolutely on top of the list.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. We will move on to Dan Van Skelkwick, Director of Department of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members. Okay, for DPW tonight, a couple items. The first is a change order. Change order one for our current water system hydrant replacement project. And so the change order was really requests from the DPW to add another hydrant, which was within, within the limits of the current Sandy Pond Road reconstruction project, and also to, to do additional valving in a location on West Main Street. And so these are really, you know, important things to do while we were there with the contractor already, so I, you know, we recommended doing that. So I don't know if there's any questions, but there's a requested motion written in the packet for signature by the chair, and the change order is change order one, and the amount is $29,230.85.
Any discussion? I looked it over.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that the select board approve change order number one for the hydrant replacement, replacement project in the amount of $29,230.85 for signature by the chair.
I second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, I'll begin. The next item, our DPW updates. And first, water supply monthly update. So Kimberly gave me some bullet points with details of how we've been doing. And since the last week in July, we've had, we've been more resilient. We've been starting each day with the Washington Street tank in the elevations in the 50s. And normally, we'd kind of work our way through the week and end up starting in the 40s, and sometimes even get into the high 30s. So, so that's very good. August 9 was our highest demand day of the year, and, and we were able to get through it. You know, some days will fluctuate up and down, but that was our highest day of the year. It's probably a hot one. Each treatment plant has actually been having some breaks on the weekends, which is good for them. Roughly 10 hours of break time. So, you know, with that constant pumping, it's, it's good to give the pumps and, and equipment some rest. We've been monitoring our large users. They're still doing good not to waste water or, or increase their consumption significantly. And we have been working on enforcement as well for the, the outdoor water ban. There's been 24 violation warning letters mailed out, and perhaps some of the people just didn't get the message. And we're generally seeing lots of compliance. So, so things have been going well with the water supply, and we're, and we're obviously continuing with the design of the Clearwell storage tank in the background.
When will that be finished?
The Clearwell tank, the goal is to have it done for the 2025 high-demand season. So the spring of, spring of next year, late spring of next year, be done.
No, early spring.
Yeah, that's what I hope.
Don't give, don't give this like, you know, spring, light spring. No, no, early spring.
Yeah, so far, it's on track. And, you know, we are working with the Army on it. So if there are any hiccups there, we're, we're ready to get ahead of that. Okay, next item, Stormwater Utility Advisory Work Group. So briefly, the website has been updated lately with some of the items from our June 24 Public Input and Information Forum, including an online parcel viewer. So the public can go online, look at a map, and see how many equivalent residential units of certain parcels have. Of course, every single family residential will pay a flat fee. There's a lot more details on the website and, from the meetings we've had. The draft rates, regulations, and credit policy are also up on the web, and also some academic papers on impervious area as well, and the, you know, impact it has on stormwater, inner water quality, and water bodies. So moving forward, there is a business informational meeting tomorrow that the work group's holding, and several businesses are invited, and we hope to get participation just to inform them of this process. So more outreach coming, and, and the work groups continuing. So their next meeting will be September 11 next month.
What time?
Four.
No.
Do you have something?
Because September 11 is also the DJFC meeting, and it would still be going on. It has to be later, if you want Robert and I there.
I will talk, yeah, I can work around it. Okay.
Yeah, because it's on the calendar.
Yeah. Let's see. Okay, talked all that. Sandy Pond Complete Streets Project, so many of you have probably driven out here by the Sandy Pond Beach and off toward Patriot Way. The paving has been completed. They've backfilled behind the sidewalk and curbs. What's left to do is striping and signage. So that's upcoming. I don't have a set schedule for it, but I really want to also acknowledge Matt Hernon, the town engineer's efforts. We were able to, we just learned a few weeks ago, secure $200,000 shared streets grant to, in addition to the $500,000 Complete Streets Grant, which will now pay for the whole project without having to use any local funds. So good job by Matt, and he also engineered it in-house. So wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
And then...
My kids just used the sidewalk today, so.
Yeah, seen people using it, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Be bike-cleaned soon, yeah. And last is the West Main Street Bridge Project Update. So I, I put up a brief presentation to kind of go through what has been recently going on and why this hasn't happened yet. So.
August 14?
Oops, yeah, it should be the 20th. That's when I made the presentation. Anyways, yeah, go to the first slide. So the recent project background, what we've been working on is utility coordination. And just a little background, it should, this should be completed during the design phase, and this wasn't completed previously when it went out to bid, and this was known at the time. It was just, we, we kind of knew the bids would probably come in high, and that's why the decision was made to bid it before, to know what we were looking at. And just a few reasons, coordination is advantageous. It'll be safer, faster construction. We know where everyone's utility is. We know who's going when. When does the gas company have to shut down their transmission main, et cetera? Less unknowns, less change orders, and less utility conflicts. So that would lower construction. So we don't want to go out there and find an unknown and get delayed. Next slide. So in late January, utility coordination was substantially complete with all utilities except for Verizon. And one critical component was the location of the Verizon duct bank. So they have 12 conduits and a duct bank, and we didn't know exactly where it was. So it may have interfered with our temporary sheet piling that needs to go down to construct the bridge. So we needed to know that. So the next step was to find that. If we, if we got out there and it wasn't in a proper location, we had the designs ready, then we could have been looking at, you know, delaying it through the year. Verizon would have to move their conduit, and it would take at least like six months. Next slide. So this is kind of funky, but it's, you can kind of, this is the sheet piling. If you've ever seen them drive sheet piles, they look like these zigzag shapes. So the ones that are kind of going horizontal on the page within the roadway, it's kind of tough to see. Those are what we were trying to make sure, we're not in the same location as the Verizon duct bank. Otherwise, we would have to move it. So, now, next slide. A little more background of the, you know, amount of utilities that we're working with here. There's gas transmission, gas distribution, gas regulator station, 12 communication conduits, the town's water sewer, and also three unknown underground conduits, and then beside your overhead utility companies. So in early 2024, we did complete subsurface utility evaluation. The main goal, locating the Verizon duct bank in relation to the sheet piling. At the same time, we did find three unknown utilities. So, you know, this was important. We know, know a lot, so we might run into less later. Next slide. So the, okay, we're here. The subsurface utility exploration did prove the Verizon conduit was not in conflict with the temporary sheeting, which was good. So we're able to accommodate them with the existing design, the existing sheeting into the new bridge. Three unknown utilities were investigated, and there was potentially, could have been related to the old Fort Devon's communications. There's just anecdotally, I've heard, the old security agency building used to connect down to the communications center on Pleasant Street. That's just anecdotal, but the Reserve Forces DPW director told me that it's not the Army's. No other company is aware of those unknowns, so at this time, they're, they're still unknown. So we'll just, when we get out there constructing, we'll find out. Recent project background. So this is where things went awry with the utility coordination. So we had issues and frustrations with Verizon. They hadn't done any design work, even though we'd been talking to them since 2018 initially, but also August of 2023. And we've been working on them with the scope and exactly what had to be done. So this was extremely, you know, hit us against the wall. And this is kind of when somebody, a new person came in. They were, and then they started requesting payment for their work, and they indicated there's no slack in their wiring, so they can't temporarily support it. So we're, you know, we're like, what's going on? So if you want to go to the next slide. Cindy?
Hi.
So at that point, myself, my consultants, we start, you know, reaching out to MassDOT. We had a few meetings with them, deputy chief engineer, project development engineer who knows Verizon. And after that, in a long story short, we did go back to Verizon and kind of put some heat on them, and they did change their stance. And they were saying, oh, there is, we can, there'll be slack in the line, we can do that. And they understood that they have to pay. So, you know, it gets to the point where we almost have to go political with it, and kind of had to. Carly, Carly actually came to one of the meetings with me, with Verizon, to get them going. So at that time, it really upsets the schedule because we had this delay, and Verizon hadn't even started their design, which they had told us they were working on. So really, we had the project scheduled major constraints. The national grid transmission main, that can only be shut down during April to September, non-winter timeframe, and it needs to be scheduled well in advance because it will upset gas users even at that time, because it's a main transmission line. So national grid's been great to work within that. I've sent them a request on it indicating our special need for our bridge, and they've worked well to get that set up. But that's a huge constraint we need to work around. Also, the pre-cast structure has a four-to-six-month lead time, so that by the time we approve the submittal for a contractor, we're waiting that long to get that on site. So with Verizon pushing us out, this was not able to occur at this year, in short. Your bidding's going to take two months, you know, two, two to three months for bidding in a contract, and submittals take another month. You're already looking at four months, and we were originally supposed to have the bid open in May. So once we pushed a few months, it really upset our year. So that's essentially what's it. There has been some work going on. I should mention, the regulator station that's located adjacent to the bridge, national grid is relocating that. And you probably might have seen them, they're working down near the West Main Street Bridge that goes up and over the railroad tracks. So they're relocating. relocating that over there, and they're relaying a distribution main from that location to the old regulator station. So that's happening now, and they're going to be working their way to the bridge to have that ready to do a tie-in when we're ready next year. So I should mention, too, the bridge condition is still maintaining. MassDOT was out there in April and did an inspection, and everything looked very similar to previous. So there's no weight restrictions, weight limit or anything. And now the plans are, do reflect, you know, proper coordination with the utilities. We do have Verizon's consultant working with us and giving us the plans to incorporate into our drawings as we bid this out. So that's the, what's going on right now with the West Main Bridge, extremely frustrating.
I hate this bridge.
Yeah.
Webster first brought this bridge to our attention, and said it was an emergency, the sky is falling.
Right. It's like the Sodom and Gomorrah.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so we are in a good, positive proceeding process right now. So, so the expectation, I didn't mention, is to bid it this fall, and I'm having bi-weekly meetings with my consultant to make sure this stays on. Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
And members of the board, if I could just echo that the DPW Director juggled six or seven glass balls, well, some of them are on fire, on this utility coordination. I do want to just publicly say that the DPW Director did everything in his power.
Dan's doing great.
Yeah, and I appreciate it because the number of meetings with these utilities, and it was all, all spring and summer, and we're almost there.
Dealing with utilities, I know firsthand is miserable.
He did a fabulous job on the utility coordination.
Yeah.
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate it.
I think once this bridge is done, it should be like, you know, special paint to say, you know, just the amount of work and how special this thing is. That's how long this thing's been going on.
Okay, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
All right. Must be 6:40, right? Because.
Yes.
Those are just approximate times, you know?
Very much so. Okay. So we're going to speak to the opening of the special town, special fall town meeting warrant for October 28, 2024.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The board has in your packet, as every time you open the warrant, a memo to ask the board to officially open the warrant for the special fall town meeting scheduled for Monday, October 28 at 7:00 PM at the high school. And in the memo is the warrant schedule. Just to point out that the first key date is Friday, September 27. At noon time is the absolute deadline for all warrant articles and all citizens' petitions to the town clerk. The select board will review and approve the warrant on October the 1st, and then the warrant will be publicly posted that Friday, which is October the 4th, and will also be sent to printing and mailing at that time, and it will arrive at all of the households within a week from that. And then, of course, there'll be a town meeting on the 28th. So we're respectfully requesting that the board vote to officially open the warrant, and we will begin to advertise and post this process for the public.
Okay. Did I make a motion to open the fall special town meeting warrant for October 28, 2024?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I believe I'm up for the town manager's report. So in your packet, you have all of the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met on July 16. In terms of the administrative update since the board last met on July 16, as you are well aware, because you've been extremely involved in all of this, and we'll talk about this in just a moment, but the last four weeks have largely been all things related to the proposed closure for the Neshoba Hospital, and we'll talk about those things under item number three in just a second. Not related to the hospital, the 71 Sandy Pond Road Community Project Planning Process. On September 4, I will be coming with the DPW Director to present to the board sort of the next step plans for 71 Sandy Pond, which will include not only a working group, but a robust public outreach and public involvement process. And we do appreciate the board's previous support to use some Opera funding towards a consultant for that. So for September 4, we'll have a whole plan to start that process. And really want to stress the involvement of the community on that, because as we said from the beginning, we know it's going to be for park recreation, open space purposes, but we really want it to be a community effort and community input on that. Also, for the final Opera spending plan proposal for September 4, we will have a plan, I believe, unless the DPW has any other efficiencies, we will have a plan for the board to consider that will close out the last of the funding. One of the projects proposed is a complete upgrade of this room. You've heard of the term, sort of like a Zoom room, but improving everything in here. So that's one of the projects.
What about the Great Hall?
And the Great Hall is going to be part of the Capitol. Yes, for sure. Chuck is going to be back on the 4th.
He can't have the BMW.
He can't have the, no, the, not the BMW. We're going to go for.
I mean, because.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, with all due respect, we've talked about the Great Hall for a long, 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 long time.
Agreed, agreed.
And we really need to actually get her done this time.
Yes. I couldn't agree more, as we do in this room.
We could have.
No, I'm with you. So September 4, we will be here for both. We'll talk about that. But specifically on the Opera piece, we have to upgrade some of the things in here for a better experience for everybody.
How much do we have? How much do we have now?
I believe there was 77,000. Was, we had 40-something thousand, and then there was some cost savings, so.
I don't know what's coming in front of us, but I see at least 20 grand for the Great Hall. That's my opinion, but I'll see what it comes for. Oh, my goodness.
The next item is, as we've been talking about, as has been a priority for the Parks Commission, is the Assistant Parks Director position. The grading of that position has been completed. Would like to have an update on the 4th with the Select Board. Obviously, the funding for the position would be subject to the certification of free cash and ultimately up to town meeting, which we will be prepared for. So we'll have an update on that. The last piece will be of the funding consideration, which ultimately will be up to town meeting. Additionally, we've already started some initial FY26 budget preparation. Hard to believe. Where did summer go? We're making some further improvements to the ClearGov budget platform. So again, also for the public on the town's website, it's called Budget Book, and also ClearGov. It's all over the spots. Check that out. This is going to be a work in progress this week, this year. We're open to any suggestions or improvements on that. And we are going to be in a position that we can use the ClearGov for the capital planning process this year. So what that will mean is all departments will be able to submit their capital requests through the ClearGov platform. Both the departments, the Select Board, the FinCom, and the public will be able to follow that process electronically as it moves, moves forward. So we believe that's a good improvement on that process. Initial fall town meeting prep has started, and we'll talk in more detail on the 4th. But as mentioned, there'll be an article for the consideration of the stormwater utility, the MBTA zoning, which all municipalities in Massachusetts have to adopt by December 31. There'll be on MBTA zoning, and the town planner will give a presentation to the board on that. It'll also have to go through the Planning Board as well. An inclusionary housing bylaw, also under development. The update of the zoning map, if the MBTA zoning passes, we'll have to update the zoning map, which will require a warrant article. And as I mentioned, the potential funding for the Assistant Parks Director position, and there may be a street acceptance as well. Those are the items we know now, but the warrant is open until the 27th, and we'll keep you updated on that. Two last points on the senior center front. Just so the board is aware, the site selection committee continues to meet. They are looking towards their next August meeting to hopefully have a recommendation for the Select Board. They've narrowed it down to two sites. I will be going with Katie Petrasi, the Senior Center Director, tomorrow to the school committee meeting as one of the sites on Groton-Haverd Road would be on the school campus, just to talk about that process and answer any questions they have. Again, a decision by the committee has not been formally made, but I anticipate a recommendation will be coming to the Select Board very shortly on that. Last, the Fourth Annual Newton Street Festival is going to happen this year. It'll be on Saturday, October 5, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The rain date will be Sunday, October 6. Vendor applications for crafters, artisans, food, entertainment are going to go out this Friday, August 23, and be due back by September 13, and they'll be on the town website and what have you. And any people interested in volunteering, just please contact my office, and we'd like to, obviously, this is a volunteer effort, and folks that are just interested in getting involved would be great. Even if it's just the day of the event, we can always use help. So there'll be more to come on that. The next item, Mr. Chair, unless there's any questions from the board on the report, the next item is under appointments. There are two matters for your consideration. The first one under appointments is the Air Cultural Council. Respectfully recommending that the Select Board vote to appoint Katie Hampton of Air to the Air Cultural Council to a term to expire on June 30 of 2027.
So moved?
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the next item is a correspondence from the Council on Aging Board regarding a board appointment. And in your packet, there is a letter dated August 13 from the Air Council on Aging, signed by the board. Just to paraphrase, on August 13, the Air Council on Aging voted unanimously four to zero to respectfully request that the Select Board, the term they use, dismiss Ms. Janine Nichapur from the Council on Aging Board, so that the board vacancy may be posted and a new, more actively engaged member appointed. We do not make this request lightly. This request is consistent with the COA's board's policies adopted on May 14 of 2024, where she has been absent from the last eight meetings. Records indicate she last attended a board meeting on November 14 of 2023. Individuals have made efforts to reach out, to encourage her, to engage with the board, but those communications have not been responded. While we are very appreciative of her work on the board prior to November 2023, and do not minimize her past service to the community, we feel it is important the Select Board, I mean, important that the Council on Aging have a full complement of current members actively participating in the ongoing work of the board. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Respectfully submitted the COA Board with the four members' signatures. I also know that the Director of the COA is in attendance, as is the Chair of the COA Board, Ms. Harge Withy.
Okay. Any comments? Or, I mean, you don't have to. I'm just, since you're here.
No, we have adopted a new policy that went into effect that if you miss three meetings in a row, you're off the board.
Yeah. No, I support that. You know, one of the things I always say, if you're going to, it's a volunteer or elected position, you got to show up.
And, yes.
And respond. So.
She hasn't spoken to any of us on the board.
Yep, yep, I understand.
And we have reached out to her.
Okay. All right.
If we don't take it lightly, but we need to build.
Oh, I understand. I mean, eight, eight meetings in a row and no responses, I think. This is the proper, this is the proper procedure.
But we need an active member.
Correct. Right. Okay. All right. Well, with that, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Select Board, how do we say?
Dismiss?
Dismiss? Cancel? Pull?
Recall?
Recall? Release? Let's go with release. Okay. That the Select Board released Ms. Janine Nichapur, I hope I pronounced that correctly, from the Council on Aging Board, and so that the vacancy may be posted immediately.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Neshoba Valley Medical Center update.
All right, hold on.
The first I'm hearing of any of this. That's a joke if it's on.
So Channel 5's here. Everybody behave.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, just to start this section on the Neshoba Valley Medical Center update. First and foremost, as I said earlier, the last four weeks have really demonstrated not only the strength of the town of Air, but frankly, the strength of the whole Neshoba Valley. And I know that you have been very involved with this, starting with Senator Eldridge's press conference on July 29, and then your special meeting that was very well attended on August 6, where you passed a formal resolution requesting three specific things from the governor. One, to declare a state of emergency, which there's been no response to to date.
Crickets.
Crickets. Secondly, that the governor enforce, and the DPH enforce the 120-day state law regarding closure of hospitals, though we all understand that the federal bankruptcy court in Texas ruled that they could close on August 31, the governor herself said on August 1 in Leominster to a few of the nurses and Mayor Mazzarella that, well, it should really adhere to the 120 days. And as this board asked, asking her to take action in her power to enforce that, and unfortunately, that has not happened to date. And then most importantly was the third item that the board put forth, is that the governor exert her leadership with the DPH Commissioner and the DPH to meet, to work with our federal and state legislative delegation, this board, and the 15 towns of this region, let's come together, put together a transition plan and solution that would keep the hospital open while we secure a qualified operator, and then transition to that. And that closure is just not in anybody's interest. And I know that Selectment Tavarez, you specifically gave her an open invitation to come on August, August 6. I also just want to highlight that last Thursday night's Department of Public Health hearing on Devens had over 400 people, not only from Air, but across the region. You both spoke excellent, as did many. It was very powerful. Senator Eldridge indicated to me that even in Boston, the hearing had made a profound impact in the sense of the passion and the support, and the ongoing plea to the governor and the DPH to do the right thing and to work with us to solve this problem. The frustrating part was, less than 13 hours later, on Friday, the. the governor's press conference, though we expected the plan to to save the other existing Steward hospitals, which nobody takes issue with, she also announced that she was going to take action to save St. Elizabeth's Hospital. And nobody has anything against St. Elizabeth's and saving any hospital, and saving all hospitals is important, including ours. But what was really concerning, I think, for all of us is that 13 hours later, after the Commissioner Goldstein and others said, "Well, there's really nothing we can do," the governor announced that they'd been working on a plan, something we've been asking for in Neshoba, actively working on a plan, that they have, she's decided to use eminent domain as a pathway to take St. Elizabeth's, that you're going to access over $4 million in funding to acquire the hospital, and then other resources. This is the exact thing that this board, that everybody across this region has been asking for from her since July 26th, and we've been told, nothing we can really do. And then we see 13 hours after our hearing that there is a pathway, right? So to conclude, and as I know others want to speak to this, I'm sure, I think the first thing, because people keep asking, they're calling the office and so forth, "Well, what do we need to do?" So the first thing we need to continue to put forth the public and political pressure. And I think Mayor Mazzarella and mine others said, he perhaps said it best at the hearing, is that they're expecting us to go away. They're expecting when school goes back and the holidays go. That we we cannot give up. And I think that is true, even though it gets exhausting like a marathon, though I've never run one, but this is a, is the public and political pressure in this board, in everybody in the town has, continues to step up. There is no question we need to secure a qualified operator to operate in Neshoba. And we know that efforts are underway to find that qualified operator. That's the hardest piece, but it's even harder when you're a governor in the DPH that has expertise. And as Selectman Livingston and others said, there's significant stabilization funds that the state have, and expertise that we have to think outside of the box and work to get this qualified operator to keep the hospital open. And the state frankly hasn't stepped up on finding an operator. The, I just wanted to speak briefly because many ask, Mr. Chair, about this eminent domain option, especially where the governor has decided that the state, which can declare eminent domain and take the hospital, and there's a whole process on the state level for that. People have asked, why doesn't the town, or can the town, or the towns collectively take the hospital by eminent domain? There's a couple of challenges with that, and that's why it's so frustrating that the state is actually the logical entity to do eminent domain because of its size, expertise, funding, and scope. For a small town like Air or even the other 15 to go by eminent domain, you have to pay a fair market value. Those are significant financial resources in the millions. We'd still have to have an operator or somebody to to run it. And so the eminent domain fit for a municipality or for the towns as a collective to proceed is just not realistic. But the state, as we saw on Friday, can and frankly, should do it if that's part of the pathway. The other thing that came up last night, and some folks have reached out to the office about this, at the yesterday's virtual hearing, an individual had brought up about a critical care hospital designation. And one that comes to mind, there's a hospital in Athol that has a specific critical care designation, where the hospital serves a unique population, also a unique demographic, whether it's rural or so forth, is designated as critical care and can't close. We are actively looking into, as of today, since it came up last night, as, well, why can't the Neshoba Valley Hospital be declared as a critical care facility? Especially when we've made the compelling case, it is a rural hospital, 17 towns, there's nothing else out here. There's all kinds of information that would support that. So that that is a pathway at least worth exploring. The final point that I'd like to bring up, and we just received this, I know Selectman Livingston just received it, as I think I did at the same time--
Like about an hour before the meeting.
Before this meeting, and it's going to be public record. We just received the closure plan, if you want to call it that, from Steward to the Department of Public Health. And the closure plan, even at first glance, has a lot of concerns to it. But what's even more concerning is the Department of Public Health, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services' response to the plan of August 20th. And they're asking Steward to respond in two days to some of the following questions. One of the things, "An assessment of transportation needs post-hospital closure." And the DPH writes, "In your response dated August 12th, you failed to include an assessment of transportation needs post-hospital closure." We've been talking about that, right, since July 26th. And we are fundamentally concerned on the 31st. There is no transportation plan, and there is no mass transit out here. But right here, you can see this flag. Then, under another point, "A protocol that details mechanisms to maintain the continuity of care for current patients." And the DPH writes, "Based on this and testimony received at the hearings held on August 15th and August 19th, the department is concerned that the plan lacks detail as to what, how, and when current patients will receive information about options for care." Another area, obtaining service at alternative delivery sites, which is an issue the town has been raising again since July 26th. And I just note, "The department is concerned that patients are not receiving the necessary support to arrange ongoing services elsewhere." Another area, under another directive, "The department requires an assessment of specific runtime changes resulting from the closure of the hospital, including outreach to local EMS providers to gain insight into the impact of the closure on their services." Well, as this board articulated in your August 6th resolution, we know, at least in Air's case, we're going to go from an estimated 20-minute round-trip ambulance to an hour to an hour and a half, assuming optimal traffic and weather conditions. And furthermore, we heard at the hearing, story after story, about the concern about this emergency response and that people are going to die. And then, again, just to highlight, another section in the report, it talks about Steward's supposed to have signed agreements by closure with all these other service providers. And the DPH flags, there's no timeline in the plan for the signing of these agreements. And so this will be available, and I'm sure it will, we'll make it available to the public, we just got it. I just want to highlight what is, if there's ever been a case where 120 days is needed, it's right in the DPH's own response, dated August 20th, which we got about an hour before this meeting. And at the end, which is very concerning, it says, and keep in mind, we're asking Steward, the DPH, "The hospital must submit a timely response to the comments of the department within two days." So, and the hospital's scheduled to close on Saturday. So to conclude, Mr. Chair, if the governor or others are listening, this is just further proof from our own Department of Public Health. We need more time. Give us the more time just for the sake of these concerns. And so we will continue to work on this. We'll continue to provide updates. And I think it'll be a standing item of your agenda moving forward. And I just want to say, I appreciate the board's support. And I wish that tonight, under this report, we had a definitive plan to save the hospital. We don't yet, but we will. We have to, we have to stay the course.
All working. Yeah, I mean, I want to thank you for all the work that you've put in, you know, going to the meetings, speaking passionately at at these meetings. One of the things that you said that kind of cracked me up, unfortunately, was if the governor's listening--
Crickets.
And--
Crickets.
Crickets. I'm going to copyright that, well, it's your term. You should copyright it, that, you know, it's just always crickets. Now she's out in Chicago.
She had ice cream yesterday, or today. She posted about ice cream. Honest to God, she posted about ice cream. I am beside myself about the ice cream. And I just want to point out, Governor Healy, we have ice cream in the town of Air. We got nice pizza and and ice cream over at the cottage. So, you know, if you'd like to stop by, I know it's past the Rotary, but, you know, we we could meet you.
Yep.
You know, but just--
And we can go out there as well. I I used to work in Cambridge. I know the commute, I can go right to the State House. Yeah, so seeing this from the DPH, as you said, it was, the email came in as I was starting to pack up and get ready to come here. But it shows that there is no plan to have two days that they're going to respond with anything of substance. Do you believe that?
Got a bridge, I can tell you.
I have some ice cream, I can sell you too.
But what's also maddening is that that was part of the purpose of the public hearing the other day, was to listen to this closing plan that no one ever heard. I mean, and it was awful. And it was just, you know, three minutes. And I think somebody should look at the video as to see what was really going on with who was being told that they had to have three minutes and who wasn't being told they had to have three minutes, because that was very, very telling. Okay? But the correspondence, I had emailed Senator Eldridge and Representative Sina, and he sent it to us right before this meeting. And the Department of Public Health is also supposed to have it on their website tomorrow. And, but I think, I think we need a special section on our website. Just for, you know, the hospital.
Yep.
So we can put everything on there.
That's a great idea. Because as you said, it's the, ignore it, maybe they'll go away. And we're not going away.
No, we're just going to get angrier.
Yeah.
To be honest, you know. You have veterans who are now, you know, going to be denied access. So disabled veterans who have now been denied access. It's absolute chaos trying to figure out where we're going to go. You already have reports of, you know, young people passing away due to the fact of this turnaround time with ambulances and everything. We already know that our health officials can get inundated even when all the hospitals are opened. And now you're just going to increase that. And, and, you know, it's just so many errors, and we have so much money in a rainy day fund. What exactly does the rain have to be?
Typhoon.
That this gets attention. But what's also very disheartening is, has anyone even heard her mention the names of the communities that are being affected? And so, you know, she gives this, well, it should be 120 days. I'm sorry, did we have representation at the hearing in Texas? We were supposed to. Did they speak? Well, evidently not. I mean, don't you think it could have ended up being, if we had representation in the Texas bankruptcy hearing, that they said, hey, this hospital, our law is 120 days? Okay, maybe the judge would have said, well, you know, we got to do this and this. I can give you 90, you know? But we didn't even get that. We didn't even give a give and take. And then she just says, yeah, it should be 120 days, and then just keeps walking. And doesn't even tell her DPH enforced the 120 days. Why hasn't this been an appeal? This is the most litigious nation on the planet, and we haven't filed an appeal? This is just disgusting, absolutely disgusting.
And I do want to thank also, you know, air, fire, air police for everything they're doing. You know, what they have to do is prepare for the worst-case scenario, right? So I saw that, you know, air, fire has, trying to redesignate, you know, their ambulances, probably speaking incorrectly of the terms, but they had a very detailed plan. And, you know, it's something that they shouldn't have to do because there is just, this shouldn't be happening. But I, I know that our first responders in town are going to do everything that they can possibly do. It's going to tax them on their personnel and their budget. And again, it makes me frustrated and angry because they're already doing everything they can do, and now they're asked to do more. So I, I sometimes just have stunned silence. Usually, I'm not someone that has a loss for words with all this, but we can't be silent. So that's--
I also told Eldridge and Sina in my email to them, like, okay, this thing closes, you better be prepared to shell out some money because the town of Air is going to need some money. All the communities are going to need money, and we don't want to hear any arguments out of you. Just give us the money because we're going to need it because our infrastructure has now been, boom, demolished.
Yeah. And Dr. Petrasi spoke very well about how it's going to affect the seniors. I thought you did an excellent job.
I actually said, we're going to need new vans, and we're going to need more money because we're going to need to hire more drivers for those vans.
Yep, yep. That, that, that hit me pretty hard because, you know, you're thinking of all, 15 different things, 50 different things, and, you know, and the way that you explained it was, that's just another hammer. We just keep on hitting these hammers and, you know, we'll get somewhere. We're all working. So, anything else, any other comments? All right.
And then Pauline has a question.
Oh, sorry, Pauline.
Oh, no worries. I wanted to wait till you all were finished. Robert, first, I want to thank you for bringing up the CMS auction that we emailed about earlier, that came up during yesterday's virtual hearing. I'm hoping that will save or create a solution. I've passed it on to a couple of reporters, or news media, I should say. But more importantly, Janice and Chris, you all have been so wonderful. And I just want everybody to know how great you have been in supporting this effort. We're not just going to need more personnel for a number of things. We're going to need more fire personnel.
Yep.
We have three vehicles, but every vehicle has to be manned by at least two people. And we don't have six people on every shift. And I hope, I hope you all realize that. I keep following it, I check it every hour. If I find anything new, I'm sure to let Robert know. But thank you, thank you, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. We are in such uncharted waters. We're in such uncharted waters. But we're going to do this because never give up, never surrender.
Absolutely. Thank you, let's all, have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.
And then, Mr. Chair, just in the interest of time, so number four, and it's to just start the process. In in the packet is the proposed draft FY '26 budget calendar. In the interest of time, the select board historically has approved this no later than the first meeting in October. And then it becomes the, the tool, if you will, for everybody, all boards, committees, departments, my office, the FinCom, and the public to follow the budget process. So that's why we want to get a draft out there early, so no decision needed for tonight. You will see highlighted, obviously, various, various budget-related committees, whether it's rate review, by-board, and so forth, are about to to meet where they'll begin to set their schedule. So we'll populate this. So you'll see in many cases, meeting date to be determined. In the interest of time, I just want to point out two proposed changes. One is, in November, the proposal is to do the public hearing for the tax classification on Tuesday, November 19th.
I thought we talked about this last year, that we weren't going to do it before Thanksgiving.
And what we want to, and we can talk about this in more detail, with the new assessor and some other information we found, we could do it sooner. If we did it the 19th, Thanksgiving's the 28th this year, I know it'd still be before, but they'd like to to do it sooner. So I'm just flagging that tonight. You will ultimately decide. So that's just one to consider. Historically, it's been either the first meeting in December or after Thanksgiving, looking to do it a couple of weeks earlier. Again, no decision, you know, tonight. And then the other thing that we're open to suggestions on, and I will be talking to the FinCom about this, if-- the FinCom about this, if, historically, we've done the first budget presentation in January. The problem with that is that so many building blocks of the municipal budget aren't available till February. So, what happens is, we have all these placeholders, or you'll hear us say, well, we're waiting to hear from the schools and so forth. What we're proposing, and you'll see in here, consideration, is to do the first public, do the public budget presentation a little bit later, so we have all of the information, so we can have informed presentation discussion. I want to keep, just point out, that doesn't obviously preclude, this Board and the other Committees are going to be working on the budget, which are public. And the FinCom, I know the Chair and the Committee's planning to have a, a robust review schedule as well, but we just felt that the January presentation, we get everybody here, and it's great to have everybody, but if we did it a little bit later, we'd have more specifics. So, something to consider. And in the interest of time, like I said, I've highlighted those changes. We'll put this on the agenda for your next meeting as well. And as the Committees, and most of them begin to meet, that's why we usually approve it by the beginning of October, like rate review, capital, and so forth, will have their schedule. So, again, in the interest of time, just wanted to get that started. Any questions, let me know. And then, number five, just to reiterate, the Board has already approved the next meeting for September 4th, which is a Wednesday at 5:00 PM, and then the Board's other September meeting will be the 17th. So, with that, that's my report. I thank the Board for all of your time this evening.
So, do you have any new business?
No.
Yes.
Can't handle, can't handle adding anything new.
I think we've had so much new business that you can't even, yeah. All right, so, the approval of the meeting minutes on July 16th?
I didn't see any issues.
Didn't see any.
So, I will make a motion that the Select Board approve the meeting minutes from July 16th, 2024.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And with that, Mr. Chair, unless there's anything else?
I don't have anything else.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye. Night, everybody.